This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, and this is the regular meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees. We're meeting in the small conference room at the lower level of the library main. My name is Steve Emming, President of the Board of Trustees, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is roll call. Amanda Motto?
Here.
Maggie Motto?
Here.
Judy Lance?
Here.
Craig Cooper?
Here.
And as I said, I myself, Steve Emming, am here. We did not hear of anyone who said they would not be attending. But just for the record for now, Malavika Shirkhandi, Sylvia Roba, Joe Heinrichs, and Tom Engelmann are not present. Expect they will be coming along. Okay, also like to introduce other folks that are present. We have on virtually Lexi Riley, the interim library director. President physically is Jennifer Williams, the operations, HR Operations Manager. Tending virtually is Tracy Lawrence, the Development Director. Here in person is Casey Shipley, the Recorder. Allison Hawa, the Early Literacy Coordinator is here. Marion McGuinness, our City Council liaison. And Jerry Skellick, President of the Friends Board. And also now Tom Engelmann has joined us, so he is President too. Thank you, Tom. Okay, let's see. So we have a quorum, and we'll continue on with the agenda. First item, or second item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sub move.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Judy. Have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Call the roll. Amanda?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll move along to the next item on the agenda, Reports and Communications. First item there is the Friends. Here.
I will take this opportunity to mention a couple of items for the Friends group here. I may have a few minutes here.
Sure.
Just some general comments on where the Friends currently stands. We have had some discussion, and the Friends really wants to try to focus more of its energies than even funding. More specifically on, probably its highest priority is actually the early literacy efforts of the library. And probably room for more discussion of what that exactly means as far as how the Friends can assist in that particular area. Friends group is certainly working quite actively promoting awareness of the Friends of Davenport Public Library and certainly promoting membership. We are looking at co-sponsoring some speakers possibly this year in conjunction with maybe River Action. They have an author coming in, a Pulitzer Prize winning author coming in for their conference this fall. That would be a really nice to have them come and speak possibly through the library at the same time. It would make a lot of sense to do something like that. I've talked to Kathy Wine at length on this one. I see on the agenda already about the large meeting room sound system, so I won't go any further into that. Friends has continued to support the Books by Mail program as far as just underwriting, if you will. And then finally, I'd like to just mention that we are also actively trying to develop some ideas for recognizing Friends donor levels. Catalog of significant donor opportunities, recognizing long-term continuous donors to the Friends group. So that's just a ongoing. Tracy's kind of got the lead on an awful lot of that. I'll give her credit for that. And then finally, I guess.
Sorry, I had this meeting. I forgot.
Welcome, Sylvia.
I'm here now. I'm sorry. I'm late. I forgot.
Okay, thank you.
And the Friends certainly looks forward to inviting the new director to the table. That's all it does.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate your report.
Yeah, we'll be in touch.
Always wanted to say that. Writing regular checks, more of even some staffing requirements. And as I've said at other meetings, I'm a firm believer that the purpose of the Friends group is not just to accumulate funds. It's to use those funds in supporting library and library programs. It'll be an interesting discussion maybe to have with the new director. We can maybe even go forward on, more aggressively on some of those arenas.
Okay. Under Reports and Communications are committee reports. Finance, anything else you want?
Just as if you look at the budget recap, we're halfway through the year, and our expenses are running real close to 50%. So, you know, obviously, we're right on track.
Thank you, Tom. personnel, Amanda?
I think the only thing we have to report is that we'll be looking forward to setting some goals and things for the new director. We'll be talking about the three-month and six-month valuation, the personal committee, I believe, and Steve. And then we'll have our recommendations for the board as a whole once we iron those details out.
Judy, Anna? Malavika? No, no, Malavika. Okay. Nothing for advocacy then? Okay, next item on the agenda then, under Communications and Reports, Committee Reports, I'm sorry, under Communications and Reports, is the Director's Report. Lexi?
Hi there. I'm so sorry, by the way, that I can't be there in person today. My son has a cold, so I'm home with him. So glad I could join virtually though. So just a few items to supplement what I shared in the written Director's Report that was in the packet. As I noted, we've made a lot of contingency plans in case we have a lot of staffing who are out for, you know, fairness reasons. Just in case we have to consider items like closing a branch, which you'll see later on in the agenda. So far, so good there though, but we have made various plans just in case that happens. We also did purchase a handful of KN95 masks for each of our staff members. Big thank you to Casey for getting those ordered and distributed to all of our staff very quickly. So I know those have been really popular and hopefully are helping to maintain good staffing levels. And HR is, City HR is recommending and requesting that all staff wear masks. It's not a mandate at this time, but we've let staff know that our request has been made. I mentioned in the report that Brittany Peacock would be doing a presentation for the Iowa Libraries Online Conference later this month. And I just wanted to update that, that that is happening this Thursday at 10:15. And so you can register for that on the Iowa Learns website if you want to attend it. It should be a good presentation about our Libraries in the Park program that we did this summer. Let's see, just a couple of other things I thought I'd share that are not in that report. You might have seen in the Quad City Times that there is discussion amongst the Iowa Legislature about potentially having some legislation involving book choices at school libraries and having some kind of parent involvement in determining what books can be on shelves in school libraries. And that doesn't necessarily directly affect us right away. That would certainly impact the outreach that we do to some of those schools, I would imagine. And there are potentially other ways that that could impact us. So just something to be mindful of as it's being discussed in this new legislative session. And then finally, I just thought I'd share, you might have also seen in the Quad City Times, a really nice article about social worker position. And featured an interview with Quinn and with Brittany about what we've been able to do with that position so far. And I saw this morning through my Google Alerts that it got picked up by the Associated Press and US News and World Report, which I thought was pretty cool. So we're getting some great attention and of course, I've gotten a lot of great usage out of, you know, what Quinn can do for our public. So just thought I'd draw your attention to that in case you haven't seen it yet.
Would also mention that when I came in the front door just before the meeting, Quinn O'Brien was out in the lobby and around the public floor there. But I was, I didn't see her first, but I saw a sign that said that there will be coffee with her. Want to stop in? I think it's on Wednesdays. Anyway, check the signs for details on your way out. Wednesdays for some period of time, so you can stop in.
That's every Wednesday, I think, for the next couple of months at least, at I believe 3:00 PM, where they'll be serving coffee and hot chocolate. And it's just a good chance to get to know some of our regular patrons here.
Okay, thank you. I was just gonna leave it and stop in and have a drink with her. I thought that might draw some more.
Let's leave out the attitude.
Okay. Let's see, I did have a question, Lexi. And the contract for the architect for the Fairmont Community Center was approved at the, this past, last Wednesday, City Council meeting. But I was wondering, Lexi, do you know what, are there specifications in there for what the outreach or the survey of the neighborhood should be to find out what people are interested in? Is there anything in there, definition of what that would be or what's expected from the contract?
I don't believe that it's specifically laid out there and exactly what that'll look like. I believe that will be the topic of the first meeting that Courtney and from the city will be setting up soon between us and Parks and the, and OPN to determine what some of that is going to look like.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the Director's Report? Interim Director's Report. Okay. Let's see, moving along then, after the Director's Report, we have the council liaison and Marion.
Thank you very much. So Steve and I have been spending our Saturdays at, in a city hall. We're going through budget meetings. We had sort of, this is our second one was Saturday, and we'll get into Capitol next week. So I think I'm glad to see Steve there. He's meeting people and trying to, you know, make connections, and I think that's great. I did talk to our city administrator about the new, the new head of the library, and it might be nice if he came and said hello, but, and then maybe in a few months, come back and talk about, you know, rather than put him on the spot. You know, but, but I'm sure that council would love to meet him, you know, once he comes on board without the expectation of a, you know, of a presentation about a new library that, you know, he's new to. So in any case, and I really want to, again, very pleased that all of now, all of the, really the library-related art project are starting to launch and moving forward. And of course, that's very important in terms of timing. And just the direction is great as well. One other thing, we have, there is a schedule out for Party in the Park. And I don't know if Amy was involved with that before she left, any of the conversations about that. Because library has always been a very strong partner in that. And so they start in June. The first one's in Harrington. And I can get that schedule to Lexi or whoever, who would like that schedule, just if you'll let me know. I got it last week. So we're doing again, it's two parks a month, so, and it'll be July through, June through August. So I think we'll, we're gonna finish up in August this time the way we really need to do. So I'll be there again doing history stuff, and I'll probably be reaching out Special Collections for help with that. They're always really good. So in any case, that is, that is on again. And, you know, different, some similar, some parks we've been to before, but most are new. We try to rotate it, you know, through, through the wards. So that will be happening. But otherwise, you know, we'll continue to meet on the budget process, which has to be approved in February. You know, we have three new aldermen. So if you want to, you know, reach out and say hello, any kind of, I've tried to introduce Steve to one, and I think he's introducing himself to others. But in any case, they are new, completely new to the council. So, and probably unfamiliar with the relationship and, you know, and I don't know how familiar they are with the library system. So I think it's really good to have a presence there. That's really everything I have today, unless anybody has any questions. You know, of me, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
The questions from Marion or comments? Okay, I guess I would just say that we will, at some point in time, extend an invitation to the new council members. And also to Judith Lee, I'm not sure.
Yes.
I'm not sure if she has been to one of our orientation sessions. I'll have to check back. I don't recall. But we usually will invite them in to talk with the director and myself about the library and the board.
She probably wasn't because she probably came on about the time the world shut down. In 2020, you know, and so I have a feeling that probably she, she wasn't able. I'm trying to think if there's anybody else. Well, Matt's not there. And Ben Juckin might not have. He might be somebody else that would, because he was new that year, the same year that Judith was. So that might be a good idea. Yeah, I think, I think that didn't probably happen. I don't remember it happening with this group.
Yeah, I'll check back and see what I can find out. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Marion. Let's see. Okay, moving along. Next item on the agenda is new business. First item there is a motion to authorize a library director or interim director to close the library building or buildings if staff levels are too low to operate the buildings safely. This comes from Lexi's Director's Report. We said they ran into a couple of days last, early last week or end of the week before, where based on the number of people that called in, they were concerned they have to close one of the branches or consolidate staff members in order to keep the other buildings open. So with that in mind, thought it was a good idea to authorize that. So since that could happen on very short notice, they would have the ability to take such action in case of an emergency. So if I may have a motion to authorize a library director or interim library director to close the library building or buildings if staff levels are too low to operate the buildings safely.
Sub move.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Marion.
I have a question.
Oh, have a motion and a second to authorize the library, library director to close the library buildings if staffing is too low to operate the buildings safely. Is there any discussion? Great.
My question is, is one building designated as the building that would be closed?
Oh, no. Lexi?
So it would depend on which building closing would have the least amount of impact to patron services that day. So, you know, not necessarily a totally black and white world. But what we would look at is which building was open the least hours that day. So, you know, say Fairmont was the building that was only open from noon to eight that day. That would theoretically have the least amount of impact on our patrons since it's opening the least hours. So that's the type of thing we would look at first.
Is it, is it likely that you would not close Main?
Correct. We would try to prioritize the main library being open.
All right.
Yeah, just one thought about communicating this. And I don't know, you probably had this conversation, but I think probably the city would have the, they may, you know, I'm sure you have your own Facebook and all that, but the city has a fairly large imprint on that as well. Or put it in C Click Fix. I don't know if that's allowed in C Click Fix, that app. But developing a communications plan, I think is gonna be important as well.
I think I recall you saying, Lexi, that signs are ready just in case.
Yes, we did ask Brittany and her team to put together signs, website banners, social media postings, and just have our media list of contacts that we would send that out to, to have that all ready in advance just in case. So my philosophy is since we have all that ready, it probably won't happen, but just in case.
That's good insurance.
Good insurance. Okay, Lexi, if it did happen, it would draw a lot of attention.
Yeah.
I'm not sticking to media terms. Came down in front of the closed building, I think.
Yeah, probably. Is there any other discussion? There is none? Call for the vote on the motion to authorize the library director or interim library director to close the library building or buildings if staffing levels are too low to operate the buildings safely. Maggie?
Yes.
Thank you. Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Amanda?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is to, is a motion to approve the selected bid for the Fairmont Branch Furnishings. We do not have the information needed to make that decision, let alone approve it. So asking for a motion to table this item until at least sometime next week. We'll have to have a special meeting to do this so that we can keep this moving. But right now, we don't have the information and not exactly sure when we'll get it. So we'll have to make a decision on that in the near future.
Sub move to table the motion.
Okay, thank you. Tom, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Amanda. We have a motion and a second to table the agenda item to approve, to approve the selected bid for Fairmont Branch Furnishings. Any discussion?
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
And Maggie?
Yes.
Thank you. And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to approve the updated library strategic plan for 2022 through 2024. We have a motion in that regard.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Amanda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Craig. Have a motion and a second to approve the updated library strategic plan for 2022 through 2024. Is there any discussion? You may recall this had to do with the fact that there were, the item that we had before, the strategic plan copy that we had beforehand, some errors in it, and those were discussed in our last meeting.
The only other update to it is the statement on the very first page that details the ways in which we work to gather community feedback for forming the strategic plan, data, focus groups, and the survey that was sent out. And that is to make sure that we are meeting the requirements for accreditation. So Casey turned in all of our paperwork for accreditation recently. And the only note that we received for feedback is that we needed to add this statement in the strategic plan to note that we use community feedback to form it. Otherwise, our accreditation wouldn't have been able to be approved. So that's, that's the other update in here.
Thank you, Lexi. I saw that when I took it out of the packet and forgot about it. Thank you very much. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the updated library strategic plan for 2022 through 2024. Call for the vote. Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And Judy?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, the motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion of welcoming our new library director. So gathered some input from you on both this and also items for evaluation. Right now, all we're discussing is the welcoming part. As Amanda said, we will, the personal committee plus me will be working on a recommendation for the evaluation portion. So the question is, has to do with welcoming. So I just wanted to have some discussion on that, see if there are any other ideas. I, so many emails recently, I don't recall if I mentioned. But when, when our library director prior to Amy Kennethway Thompson, when he was here, when he joined us, I'd been looking back, researching some of the old meeting minutes from that time period and found out that in there, and afterwards, I kind of recalled it, that we had a community meet and greet event at Fairmont Library. That actually ended up for, in his case, about three days after he started. And as clear as I could tell. And anyway, so, and that, at that particular time, I believe it said that it ran from like 6:30 until 8:00, but you know, time is not important. But that might be, just want to throw that out as an idea, something we might do that might allow us to get a lot of people, or at least provide the opportunity for a lot of different kinds of people to, to stop by and meet our new director. And thought, you know, maybe what might have like a guestbook or something so we could maybe at least find out who had been there. And that might be a way, because as I, we have a tremendous amount of ideas about people that we feel these should meet, and that's great. But it was kind of, as I kind of looked, I was kind of scratching my head and say, well, you know, how do we prioritize these? Because someone, you know, I think like the mayor and the council, for example, probably should meet, you know, very early on. And then after that, you know, there's others, and some of them, you know, with the director being new, you know, it's gonna be a lot of, you know, time pressures I anticipate, so might want to stretch that out. But this might be a way we could, you know, at least provide the opportunity for some of those folks to come in and the new director. That was one thought I had. Any questions, comments on that? Okay, there is a second. Moving along. Let's see then. And I guess, as far as me, the mayor, mayor and council, I'll get together with Marion and see if there's a, you know, what might be the best, you know, forum to do that, at a council work session or maybe before a meeting, at least maybe have just an introduction early on. And then maybe, as you mentioned, a time later, he could come and, you know, give his observations of the library at some, maybe a state of the library address or something.
They see your face and then he comes back later. Yeah. That was Cory. I'm gonna give Cory credit for that. She was very sensitive to the fact that when somebody's new, you don't want to put them on the spot with something like, but, but understood, be nice for the council to me. And we, that opportunity in a social setting isn't available with a full council and mayor, because that becomes a meeting. So, does that make sense? So, so him coming to a meeting just to, for an introduction is probably, maybe a scheduled one, is probably. is probably the best thing, but we can't ever meet with, as a group, because it's just, you know, we really try to avoid that.
Sure.
So it's, it's, so we're not breaking any rules. Take that seriously.
I guess one of the other items that I asked you to respond to, one of the questions, the question there was, what could or should the board do to help innovate, ah, integrate our new director with supervisor staff and us, the board? And guess we just, as I sent back out to you, there were, there was more than one that said that as far as meeting the staff, we should leave that up to the director and the staff. I mean, probably don't really have a role in that. As far as meeting with us, I, there also were comments that, you know, we should like have one-on-one meetings with the new director. And, you know, he had indicated the same type of things. So I think that's probably, you know, a good way to go with that, or probably the best way to go with that. And also there's a suggestion that maybe we could have some type of an informal meeting that, you know, just a social event to just kind of talk about things and, you know, just get to know each other better.
And there may, the county staff may have a plan for his onboarding into the city departments, because that's, you know, that's going to, I'm just trying to think, you know, when you have someone who's, who was here for 33 years, the onboarding, just the finance and, you know, how the different departments work, might be helpful to someone who has absolutely not been involved in. I don't know if we ever, I certainly, I'm pretty sure wouldn't, didn't do that with Amy, but, but probably the person before her. So, and maybe they already have plans for that. But I would suggest that it's not such a cipher.
Okay, thank you.
And Cory would probably be the person who could coordinate that, or she could assign someone to do that. I think that's probably what she'd do.
Okay.
Obviously, Amy doesn't report to Cory, but it's good. With a director, I understand it.
Okay. Thank you, Randy.
Yes.
Aren't there, aren't there like routine director meetings?
There are, there are, yeah, but I don't, yes, and yes, there are. And, and Amy used to go to those. She's not required to, because she doesn't report to the city structure. But Amy, but she came to them, I remember Cory mentioning that, and she was welcome at them. So that's after it could opt, I mean, that's city staff can't dictate to the new director what, you know, he, you know, he should do. But I know Amy, I now remember Cory telling me Amy did go, and that's, so that might be something, again, that would, that might be helpful also. There's also, and this is a strange thing, but there are people on staff who do this. So coming up in March, and I know this is a busy time, there's, there's, we were doing Davenport Academy again, which is the once a, so once a week, Monday night, for six weeks, and you're introduced to all the different departments of the city. Now, that may be too much in, in his time here with everything he's doing, but that is a really good introduction to the city government, and it might not be necessary. And I don't, haven't seen the dates for that yet, but I will let you know when I
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
One other thought I had that wasn't included, I didn't think about it at the time, but that we have a bio that Jeff provided for purposes of the news release. And I thought it'd be nice if perhaps each of us wrote up a short bio. I know we introduced ourselves when we, when we interviewed the candidates, but, you know, giving the, I don't know, the stress level of those kinds of things. We may not have remembered all that, that stuff. So I just thought that would be a good idea. So I don't know, does anybody have any objections to doing that? I thought we could, when he, when he arrives, we could give him that information, and then when we sat down to meet with him, at least he'd have a little bit of background on us. Might save a little bit of time and, and kind of be an iceberg.
Another thing I remember, it was like Dave Iglehart was there, so how long that was. And it was a new director, and it was, it was in the evening, and it was wine and cheese. It was just lovely. And there would, no, it wasn't just the board. It wasn't like spouses or anything. And I, I even know it must have been Kenneth Wayne. I don't know who it was, but anyway. But I was kind of taken aback by the, you know, one-on-one. It seemed like right away that might be kind of heavy. I mean, like you said, just not day after day after day, you know, on all these bases. And, you know, that could just get really scary for anybody to try to remember who this is. So I don't know. Spacing is going to be important.
Sure. And, and I envision that there'll be, that's a good point, Judy. Thank you. I had thought that, you know, all of this process, whatever we come up with, you know, we're obviously going to have to talk with Jeff about that and, you know, get his input and see how things fit together, even as far as, you know, like having a meet and greet. We'll definitely need to check his schedule, because he's going to be new in town and may have all kinds of things going on. You know, he has some small children, you know, maybe things going on at school.
Are they have to look for housing, or are they, can they do that? I mean, you got to look at it.
Yeah.
That would take some time.
Yeah, so there would be a lot of things going on, and we're going to have to fit all this stuff together. So, you know, I'm sure there'll be, you know, some discussion about how all these things have to fit together. Anyway, I just wanted to, I guess, run through those things, and then also just see if anybody else had any other comments about thoughts about, you know, how we might best do this. And certainly, this isn't bad if anybody has any thoughts, you know.
Yeah, of giving him some sort of short biography of each of us would be a very good idea. Because during, because during, during the interview, a lot of stress. And who would remember?
That's good old Tom. I remember.
I, I think that's a good idea. Not only would he have contacts, but
Context.
You know, context, too.
How do you, how would you want to do that? Do you want us to each send one to you and you put it together? And like, send it all to him, or do you want us to send it individually to him?
I don't know. What do you, I'd be happy to, if you want to send it to me, or?
I, I, I just think it'd be a good idea for him to have it.
I don't know if it's either, it just comes in one email or something, him, as opposed to him getting, you know, nine emails and sending them to different places, like.
Like a picture? Seriously, in the word picture? You could get three or four on page, and you can have it in three pages, probably.
Let's see about getting pictures.
Just take a selfie. It has to be pretty. Without a mask.
Kidding everyone. No, but yeah, so I guess maybe if you could, if everybody could send me some, you know, information you're comfortable in sharing, a little biographical information about yourself, send that to me by the end of the month, and then that'll give me time to get something together and, and get it off to him. Make that part of the welcome package. Okay, that's all I have. Unless there's something else as far as the welcoming? Let's see. Next item on the agenda. Board president's discussion item. Okay, stuck this on here, so let's see what Steve has. Okay, first item. Trustees with terms ending in June. And Malavika's not on, but her term ends in June of 2022. And I believe she is completing a full six-year term. Tom, yours also expires this year. If I recall correctly, and I looked back, but it wasn't entirely clear. I think you started with a four-year term to fill an unexpired term.
I think that's right, yeah.
Okay, so, so, and then also Maggie, I believe you also are ending a four-year term that filled an unexpired term. Is that correct?
Sounds a lot right.
Pardon?
It sounds a lot right.
Okay, thank you. So I looked in our bylaws to see what it says, because I knew that we are term limited, because that, that is in the, we're limited to two terms. Okay, so so two, okay. So bylaws say that the trustees are limited to two terms, but exactly what constituted term isn't entirely clear. So I believe from reading it that we're limited to two full terms. It says board members will be appointed and begin their term during the regular monthly meeting in July for six-year renewal terms. Vacancies are filled in the same manner as the original appointments, with the newly appointed board members completing the remaining months of the term. No board member will be eligible to serve more than two consecutive terms. So I think, you know, as, as it starts out saying to begin their regular, terms their regular monthly meeting in July for six-year renewal terms. And after that, it just uses the word term.
Is it renewal or renewable, Tom?
No, it does say renewal.
Oh, that's wild.
Yeah, so, yeah, I looked at that too. So anyway, I mean, it's, it's, it's up to us. But whatever we decide, I think we should make an amendment to make it a little more clear. Like you said, I believe we're limited to two six-year terms, but, but that's not obvious from what I just read. The city ordinance does not specify term limits. It's up to the mayor to decide whether or not to reappoint, appoint or reappoint. And you might, if you think about this, you might recall the problems in the Civil Rights Commission. And I, I guess I would, it sounds like that. I guess I did not read their, what it says about, in the city ordinance about the Civil Rights Commission, but, so anyway, it so like I said, perhaps, you know, we should decide what that is, and at some point amend our bylaws. But this time is, you know, like I say, it's unclear. I think it's supposed to be two full six-year terms. But anyway, that's where we're at. So I spoke with Mayor Mattson about this process of appointing board and commission members. And he asked that you let him know by mail, email, or phone if you're interested in being reappointed, and whether or not you're, you're interested in being reappointed. And I guess I would ask that you let me know first. The reason for that is, is because if you're not interested in being reappointed, then we should try to find some folks to recommend to fill those spots, you know, that maybe, you know, that we know that are interested and would be good trustees. And so I guess if you could let me know that by the end of the month, I'd appreciate it. And, but I guess maybe we should have some discussion on what you think the term, the terms are.
Well, I was just doing the math, and if I was, that's true, I was appointed in 2016, which I don't remember. I would be ending my first full six-year term
Yes.
in 2022.
Yeah.
Which would imply I could get an entirely another six-year term, should, should I want it.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think that's what it says, but it's not entirely clear. Can't believe this has happened, but I think I'm in my second term. Pretty sure that Yes. And it was six-year. I can't believe that I've already been here six, but Yeah. I'll tell you what, let's, let's do this. We're going to have to have a special meeting for the furniture bid when that information comes. So I will put something together and send it out to you, and we will clarify this, and we will vote on it.
So Tom, you started, your second term was started in 2016, and then you had, you were on four years prior to that, filling out somebody else's?
No, I don't think so.
Yes.
Yeah, but yours is all from the rest of us. I always thought you were in our
Because, because Replace somebody.
I know I replaced somebody.
Yeah, in 2000 2012, I think it was, I did find in the board minutes that you, Tom, myself, Sylvia, okay, Dave Iglehart, and
Me, I was
And Judy, thank you, Judy. There were five of us. There were five trustees appointed. So there had to be some staggering of the terms in order to have three
Yes.
separate groups.
That's why he got a four-year term?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think Frank Borst, you know, was the, who retired, he and
Hickerson?
Yes.
Carl Hickerson.
Carl Hickerson both resigned at that time, and so there were, there were five board members appointed at once, which is very odd, but, but anyway, that's
So I'm just wondering, so for somebody like Tom, are we saying that he has served, so he would be eligible for two more years to serve, or a whole nother?
A whole nother six-year term.
So, so some people would be, I don't, so some people would be serving effectively almost three terms.
Could be.
That's what we think that might be.
Welcome to next week.
Even though you're finishing out someone else's. I don't know, that seems contrary to the purpose of having six-year terms.
I don't know, it's, six-year terms are, just from my perspective, and I'm not criticizing six-year terms, but that is a long term.
Yes, it is.
I used to, for some reason, I ended up being secretary on the boards I was on. And we would have class of this, class of that, and I strongly, that's, this is the hardest thing I think boards have to deal with, is when does the term, when do terms end? But most, I think, and most boards I've been on, if you're, if you're filling in a term, not where, okay, you started now, so you get a four-year term, we were doing five, and we're going to stagger. But if you start, if, if you fill someone's an unexpired term, typically that doesn't count as a full term going forward. That has been my experience.
Right, but you count those years that they had as part of the term, so?
No, no, so like if, if you would come in and somebody left, and you came in and filled the last two years of their term or whatever, you would be eligible for two, for two more terms, probably, under that scenario. And that has, that was, been typically my experience on other, not-for-profit boards I was on. But, you know, you may wish to do something else. But keeping what your class is, is extremely, keeping that list every single year on the contact list is an extremely important thing to start doing, I think, because it, because people get confused who filled whose retired term, and, you know, so if, you know, it's just
I'm just wondering why it matters when someone starts, like, whether they're finishing someone's term? Why don't they just, why isn't it Why don't they just, why isn't it just, you're starting your term? Like I understand somebody left, so like their term ended up being two years. Why does it, why isn't it not, that new person comes in, they're starting their term of six years? That'd be easier to track.
Because then the, when people in their terms gets messed up, you need to stagger and have a certain number of people go off.
Okay.
And it could be that those people or some of those people are coming back. And that's why you don't do that, because then it gets all out of whack.
Yeah, because.
And I had to put a board back into whack, so I ended up doing that.
The state law and the city ordinance, you know, both say that when a, when a board is established, that when a board, when a library, this is the library, exclude, the library in the, in the Iowa code and in the city ordinances, they both say that in the beginning, there would be, you know, nine members, the, the city ordinance says, nine members and there would be, they each would have, it would be divided up so that they start with six-year term, four-year terms, and two-year terms. And then the stadium prescribes, because you don't have to have nine members, you just have to have an odd number.
I just always figured that the, because these terms are long, longer than anybody else's, that that was something that like the state library, this is the library thing specifically? Why do you want to have one?
I think a lot of them used to be long like this.
I think a lot of the commissions used to have longer terms than they have now. Yeah.
Well, I think with libraries, the reason for the long term is to cut out the political shit.
Yes.
You know, as what's, well, literally what's happening in Dublin right now, where they're talking about penalizing school librarians. I mean, it's to cut that shit out, you know? We're, we're the insulator between the library and the politicians.
And I don't care how we come down on this, I don't have the vested interest either way. I was just wondering, it seems like if they're, if it's saying to renewable, should say renewable, terms, that it's trying to cap the years of service that one person can serve at 12 years. Otherwise, what's the purpose of saying you can only serve two terms you can serve?
Yeah, previously, just, carry on with that. And I think it may have had to do with the two resignations when the five members were appointed in 2012. Prior to that, there was no limit. And so a board member, as long as the mayor appointed him, as long as the mayor, yeah.
Which, actually, that was a complaint.
That would be a problem.
And so, and so they decided, the board trustees decided that they really needed to change that. And there was, there's a lot of emotion over that.
Yeah.
Because there are people that, you know, they love their library and.
Sure, sure, sure.
I throw one more wrench into this. Yes. I'm running for Iowa House.
Do I?
Mr. Dade.
Yay.
All right.
So do I have to give up being a trustee? At least not until I went to. Oh, no, I sent you back an email on that.
You did?
I couldn't find anything in the Iowa code, the city ordinance, or the bylaws that have anything to do with, including when you're, if you're elected. I wonder if it makes a difference.
I think when you're elected, it might make a difference.
Well, I, I, I don't think so. We have a supervisor who's also on the school board.
That's right, that was.
He's unelected?
Those are both elected positions.
Right, right.
But one of them, maybe one is.
Appointed, right? No, no, no.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's done with dirty elections. Okay, so I'll, I'll put something together and when we have a special meeting, we can consider that then and move on.
I guess then, so I, I've been around since before 2016 that I don't remember. I really don't.
Yeah.
Like second years?
Yeah, you, you were, I think, 2012, so.
Obviously, then I may be, I may be in my full second term, second term.
It'd be illegal.
And the only other thing I wanted to mention is that we need to be more diligent about our board training and be sure we're up with that. And as Lexi mentioned, there's going to be, Thursday is the Iowa Online Conference, Iowa, State Library of Iowa, Iowa Libraries Online Conference. And just mentioned that this thing, just, you know, for full disclosure, this thing runs from like nine in the morning to three in the afternoon. And then there is a maybe six to seven-thirty session in the evening, which is, you know, I guess primarily there for trustees. But, so there's an opportunity, if you're available. You can find more information about that at the, at the State Library website. Or does everybody get the, get the morning, Monday morning eye opener? Yeah, it was in there, that's where I saw it. But as Lexi mentioned, the first session there, Brittany Peacock from our library is giving a presentation on our outreach efforts.
What time is that?
That's, I think she's at 10:15.
Yes, 10:15, that's correct.
And then the, there's an evening session too, so. And when I'm able to catch those, I try to put together some notes and send them out. So there's still another opportunity, you know, because I realize everybody's busy. And this is the Iowa Library Association website? No, this is the State Library of Iowa. Okay. Okay, so, shift gears.
One other thing about the, the board, I need to say. Tiffany Thorndike will probably ask everybody to do an application. That's one of the new processes. This is, this is a board application, boards and commissions application. I'm not sure if it will be true with the library, but that's typically what, and what they ask people to do, especially when they're renewing, and they don't have anything on record. Now, that may not happen, but if it does, it needs to be taken. In other words, what they're, what they tried to do in all the uproar that we had over the last few years is make sure that the procedures were in place, were specific, were, and everybody would follow the same. And you can understand why. So I'm thinking that I will find out if she will be doing that. I'll ask the question, I'll let you know, Stephen, and you can share, okay?
Yeah, the mayor, the mayor said that people would need to do that. Like if we, if there was someone that didn't want to continue and we wanted to recommend somebody, that they would need to do that.
Right.
But.
She may want them to fill it out, because I think she's trying to standardize everything so that then nobody can say, well, this, you didn't make them do that, that kind of things.
Okay, yeah, let me know.
Yep.
Great.
If I could just then make an observation.
Yes.
Since it appears I'm going to be going off the board. Who does this? Who makes this?
I make the updates.
Okay, I'm wondering if then it might have, it would be useful then, if it said like, for example, for myself, second term appointed since 2016, originally appointed whenever. You know, so then you could kind of see, okay, I was filling a term and then, okay, now, yeah, I'm into my second full six-year term, okay. Then there's no argument about where are we? I'm just.
Yeah, we'll see if we can.
I, I, I'm just thinking that going forward, that might make things a little clearer.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but did you start?
But then would you put first term appointed? And then it looks like you're, like you're finishing a second term then, as opposed to just filling someone else's term? I don't know how to want to phrase that.
You could say, you could say class of, whatever your ending year is, with a parentheses, one or two or P for partial. And that tells you right there, if you, if you decide that you want the partial, not to count as a term.
Right, right.
And so it's, the class of is the year it ends and then P, one and two, and that would get you. That would tell you everything you needed to know.
Yeah, people remember what that means.
Right. Have a code at five. Okay.
So. Next slide, the agenda is training. Okay, like to introduce Alison.
McGahey.
McGahey, okay, thank you. She's our new early literacy coordinator. And this is, we're welcoming her, thanks to some of the ARPA funds that we received, so.
Is this the best place for me to stand or does it really matter as far as?
No, that's why you can, you're right there, so you're good.
All right, okay, well, thanks so much for having me. I appreciate the chance to be here today. I thought I would just give you an overview of really where I've been spending my time and energy since I started, so you can get a sense of what I've been up to, what's moving forward, and what I hope to do in the longer term. So take it away, Casey, to the next slide. So again, I'm Alison McGahey. I started in mid-October and I have a long background in communications, PR, and marketing. And I've done that mostly in the field of higher education. So I worked at Western Illinois University, both campuses. I worked remotely for University of Iowa, started my career as a newspaper reporter. And yeah, but in addition to that, after I finished my master's degree in English, I had a five-year career other path in which I taught adult education. Five years combined at Blackhawk College and Eastern Iowa Community Colleges. And in that experience, I was very passionate about that teaching. And for one of those years, it was parents and children together in a family literacy program. So when I saw this job ad pop up, I thought, that is a really unique mix that they're looking for, and that's me. So I had to throw my hat in the ring and I am super excited to be here. I also should mention that I did work here as a sub during that same period. So I did have a little experience here, really enjoyed it. And I've been a big in Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I've done some tutoring and reading buddies. So even though, again, it's a lot of PR work that I've done, I've always had this passion for literacy and lifelong learning, so thank you. Okay, so one of my primary responsibilities is promoting 1,000 books before kindergarten. And I wasn't sure, I assume you guys already have talked about this program, but just in case you hadn't or needed a refresher. It officially launched last spring. So it's been ongoing and it's a national nonprofit that we participate in. And their two objectives are to promote reading to newborns, infants, and toddlers, so we really are talking early, and to encourage parent and child bonding through reading. So one of the unique things about this is that it is self-paced. So we can encourage people to sign up when they're actually an expecting mother. It could be somebody who's already four and kindergarten's not that far away. And the family goes at their own pace and chooses how long it's going to take, basically. There are three ways that they can get signed up. They can do it themselves online, they can download an app, or we can help them do it here in person. So as you might know, as the child is reading, or the parent is reading to the child, or the caretaker is reading to the child, as they go along, they're earning these really fun incentives. So at the 100 books level, they get a little storytime at home kit. At the, I think, 250 books, they get a free book. And so the incentives go on and on from 250 to 500, 750. And at the end, when they complete, they get their picture up on the bulletin board and they get to put a little personalized nameplate in their favorite book and they get a T-shirt. So it just really instills a sense of pride and accomplishment for their achievement, so thanks. Good. Okay, so in addition to those cool prizes, which are really cute and fun, the larger picture, right, is that we really want to see increased skills that are needed for school success so that when kids get to kindergarten, they're not already arriving with that kind of gap and behind the curve. So we know from studies that the more the caretaker is reading to the child, the more it's developing vocabulary and awareness of the, the sounds that letters make and how they connect to the print word. And just all kinds of concepts that are being introduced to them that maybe are going to come up in their play, things that they wouldn't encounter otherwise if it wasn't from a book that was read to them. And another point that this organization really stresses is that, you know, publication, if public education doesn't start until age five or six, all that time before, that's education in the home. The parent or the caregiver really is their first educator. So that's an important message of this program. So a goal for what they say on their, as part of their overall mission. Our goal is to provide a simple, innovative, yet fun approach to establishing strong early literacy skills. We help young children gain the confidence necessary to become strong readers. So one of the biggest areas that I've been spending my time and focusing my energy on is trying to reach out to organizations in the community to inform them about the program, ask if they would be willing to distribute bookmarks and brochures to their clients or their constituents, and/or to offer some programming and enrichment. And that could be anything from doing a storytime to, depending on what the organization is, maybe doing a little parent education. So where I've really succeeded, I've made a lot of these partnerships so far. And all through the late fall, it was, yes, can you please come? And now it's a little bit of, okay, it might have to be over Zoom or, you know, it might have to be in a couple of months, but I think we all understand that happening. So I am really proud of the fact that in the short time I've been here, all of these organizations have agreed to do those things. I, I mentioned the previous slides, so I've connected with Head Start, Davenport Community Schools. I've been to a couple of family events that they have to sign people up. QC Pregnancy Resources, I just connected with them and I'm going to visit this week, I think. Scott Community College and the adult program that I mentioned I used to work in. And I have a little more to say about that in a later slide. Scott County WIC, I'm going to present to their staff nurses over Zoom this week. And then with Scott County Kids, there's three bullets listed underneath there, but basically it's through Genesis, if I'm understanding right, a lot of different ways that expecting mothers and first-time mothers are getting attention and help and guidance from visiting nurses. And this would be an opportunity to send materials home with them in a bag and maybe a gift of a free book. Scott County YMCA, one of the daycares is giving out information and I still need to connect with the other two. And with United Way Quad Cities, their born learning program, I'm working with the director of that program to try to do some parent education or just at least visit some of their classes and talk about the program. So with our very busy outreach department, for as much as we've been able to do during COVID, I have joined with them to attend, when the weather was nicer, went to the Frey House Farmers Market with the Owl. I've been to Wilson Elementary School Family Night, Brock Island Arsenal Trunk or Treat. We did a Salvation Army client education class over Zoom. And I've been trying to go as much as my schedule allows to storytimes at each of the three branches so that when new, or when families walk in, I'll say, oh, are you new? Have you been here before? Have you heard about this program? And try to get people signed up or at the very least aware of the program when they come to storytime. And then visits that were upcoming to Head Start and to Children's Villages at Hoover to do some storytimes. Those are on hold until these numbers kind of hopefully go down. So I just threw in a picture of, one of the events I've been able to do, I did go to before Christmas, I was at Children's Villages at Hoover and did a, when they had a family event in their little gym, I set up a table, as you can see, and I got 15 families signed up in like an hour. And I was really warm and sweaty in that room and talked a lot in an hour. But I felt very proud of that. So another part of where I'm spending my time and energy is, is, you know, public awareness and marketing. So I would love to, and I know my director would really hate it, my boss supervisor, would really like me to get a billboard campaign going, so we're talking about what all is involved in that. I've worked on increasing signage within the library. And so we have some QR code posters around so that if someone's browsing and they see it, they can, with their phone, they can download the app that can track books through that app. Working on social media posts here and there. And one of them actually garnered some media interest. So I did an interview last week with WQAD. They haven't done the story yet, it's maybe not the most breaking news for them, but, but they were, the reporter was genuinely interested and she said she would let me know when they get that put together. So that, that was exciting for that to happen. So this was actually the post that I was referencing. So this little boy, Jack, came into Eastern with his parents and he's already at age two, he's already finished the program, but he was, yeah, I know, I know. And the parents were like, we think we've even read more than that, we just didn't train. They, and the, actually, it was really neat, the adult, the father was talking about how he had grown up as a, coming to the Davenport Public Library and how much they want to instill the fame in him. So that was really exciting. Oh, and I wanted to, so here, if you look down the left, bottom-left corner of that picture, oh, there's another recent finisher. That's okay. It was amazing. There you go. And that pen, the 500, that's the, they get it 500 to take home and, you know, put in their room. But if you look about where there's a hashtag for 1,000 books B4K, that's the national hashtag. So if a person clicks on it, which is just a screen image here, so it won't work, but that hashtag, if you use it and if you click on it, then you'll see all libraries all over the country that are participating. And so that's really fun, because you just see, it just gives you the chills to see all these little faces, the signs saying, I completed it. But it's fun too, if we post and use that hashtag, then we're in that, you know, pool of people doing that. So it's kind of fun to check out if you think of it in halftime. I've also done a video, great photo of me there, sorry, but showing off each of the incentives that you do get along the way to your thousand, so we put that up on our YouTube. that you do get along the way to your thousand, so we put that up on our YouTube. So, how's it going so far? This is the, a little peek into the stats. So, uh, before I came here, the program officially was, there was pre-registration open in February, it officially launched in April. I started in October, and overall, right now, we're at, the last peak, it was at 599 registrants. The number of books that have been tracked is over 54, probably close now to 55,000, which is a cool number to see. Um, and since I've been here, there, we've, uh, gained 112 new signings.
Of the 590 there.
Uh, that's a good question, yes, I think so, yeah. Um, I, this is a family that, um, they're regular patrons at Fairmount, the state ends, and I just thought that was a really cute picture, they are participating in it. Um, so patrons who've tracked their first 25 books, we've got 185 at that level, and at the 500 book level, we've had 38, and of total finishers, there's been 14. So I definitely hope to see that number grow, but 1,000 books is a lot to read.
It's a lot.
Um, so I see now the font is a little small to read this, but this is one of our early finishers, he, they are patrons at Eastern, and I asked if his mom would give a little, uh, testimonial as to what they enjoyed about it. So he's obviously got his free T-shirt and one of the book gifts that he received. Uh, Sarah, his mom, said, we love the 1,000 books before kindergarten program, because it was fun to track our progress through the website and earn prizes as we went. It kept us engaged each day with reading several books to work towards our goal, and Owen was slash is always excited to go to the library and find new books to enjoy. We love wrapping up our day with snuggles and a few books, or ten. This program is a great way to motivate young readers and get them excited about reading. So, those are our genuine comments, but I said, boy, I couldn't have written it better myself to promote it. So, uh, what I would like to be able to do over time is obviously continue on that relationship building, continue focusing on that, creating partnerships, as well as continuing everything else I mentioned. Um, I would like to eventually be providing some in, in library programming for parents and children, so we don't know exactly what that might be just yet, whether it's a make and take, or doing somehow modeling, you know, interactive reading and play and vocabulary building, things like that. Uh, we've talked about planning a sort of graduation ceremony for finishers, I know some libraries have done that, and it's a really cute thing to do. Um, I mentioned earlier, in working with the adult ed program at Scott, I would really like, I have a student, actually, she's a graduate from Scott, now working in that adult ed program, and she and I are working together to develop a survey, so that when adult learners are coming in, and we're talking about, um, English language learners, but also, um, American-born citizens who did not finish their education for a number of different reasons, they're kind of a more marginalized population, and with this focus on inclusion and the strategic plan, the thinking is, we might be able to develop a survey about why, what keeps patrons away potentially, and what are some of those barriers, and then if we can get good information through that survey, then how can we maybe address those barriers? So it's an ambitious goal, but I think it's worth trying. Um, I would like to possibly expand to, uh, both, you know, large hospital systems and pediatricians offices, getting signage up in community bulletin boards, some business partnerships. Right now, we do have some restaurants that give out coupons in the, in the goody bag that they get when they sign up, um, it's just a few of those, and then partnering with Tracy, I give, I don't think that's the right title for her, but Development and Friends of the Library to explore further fundraising. So, I'm happy to answer any questions whatsoever, and just want to say thanks again for giving me the chance to give you a little update today.
Any questions, Alison?
Depending on how big your graduation class is, it might not be a bad idea to think about doing that at a city council meeting, because you do things like that, and it kind of makes the point of where the funding is, is coming from.
Right, yeah, the results, visible results, right? Yeah, I know Brittany, who you all know, I think at a previous position or library that she had worked for, they did one, so I'm definitely wanting to learn from her about how they did it, and, and, uh, just timing, I think, is more of the question than adding. You want to have a good number of finishers.
Yes.
So, yeah, good idea. Any other, lots of questions?
Love your excitement.
I am, you can tell, I mean, it's a pretty tough thing to promote, kids becoming life on readers, that's, that's a great thing to be able to.
And the so, the littler ones are just, they're so, you know, compared to trying with the sixth, seventh grader.
Well, and it's, to me, it's so, um, you can just see how enriching it is, even just from kids hearing one book. These vocab words will pop up that you just know they're being exposed to, that they might not otherwise, and their little brains are absorbing that, so, like to see that happen as much as possible.
So, how were they dealing with this before you were, um, how were they doing this before you were appointed?
Good question. So, what a lot of, so my supervisor and the YS staff, they are like, well, we wanted to do all of this, but we can't do it on top of everything else we're already doing. So, basically, they had all of the, my understanding, to answer your question, is they had all of the supplies ordered, so at each location, um, customer service staff has a little station with the free books, the 100 level, the, the tracking sheets, all of that, and so, um, when, I'm not exactly sure how it was first promoted before I got here, but when a patron comes in and says, hey, we're at this level, or hey, can we get signed up, customer service would take care of that. However, there was really no, no one had.
Marketing of this.
Exactly, going out and making all those partnerships, yeah, getting into the schools, reaching out to daycares, that just was not possible on anybody's plate. So that's kind of my understanding of taking it from a little more passive to.
Yeah.
Focus attention.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it very much.
Yeah, thank you.
My son signed up for that over the summer before, it would have been before you came on.
Okay.
And I think it was just at Eastern, they were having the, the chalk, the sidewalk for it, and so they told us about it then.
Yeah.
They just had that little area, so.
Let me know if you have any questions about it. Thanks, yeah.
Okay, uh, moving on, next item on the agenda is to adjourn, so a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Tom, second.
I'll second. Also, I should tell you, Sylvia, except her battery was running out, that's why she had to sign off. She texted me to tell you.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so a motion, second, to adjourn the meeting, let's, um, let me see. There it is. Great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Maggie?
Maggie? Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Judy?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Appreciate that.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks a lot, bye.